Check, check, one, two, and three, and three.
I'm the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all right. Sarah, has this meeting been posted and published in accordance with FOIA?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And if I can get a motion in a second to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make them, okay, I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Joe Passammon and seconded by Tab. Let's see here, all right. Moving into number five, the approval of the amendments from April 7th, 2025. Can I get a motion in a second for those, for the approval of that?
I'll do it again.
All right, thank you, Joe.
I'll second it if we need it.
All right, thank you. And is there, is there any objection to accept, to accepting those amendments?
No.
All right.
If there is, they have to rewrite.
Yeah, all right. Those are accepted without objection. And moving into item number six, which is citizens' comment period. Are there any citizens that have signed up for public comment? No? All right, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the citizens' comment period and we'll move into the Assistant County Administrator Report. And who is going to be giving that report? Oh, hey.
Well, I'm not actually, but I'm going to introduce Amanda Dickman. She is our Director of Libraries and she's here to provide a few updates on facility improvements and what she has upcoming for summer programs.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt for just a moment? There's a whole bunch of people in the lobby, I think they wanted to speak here at public comment. We all got stuck in traffic and roadwork out there.
I'm happy to open it back up after, I let her do the presentation and I don't mind opening it back up.
Thank you.
And if somebody can make a motion, if there are people that want to speak, we'll, we'll open it back up.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, library, love the library.
All right, floor is yours, thank you.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, I hope you enjoy the goodies that you have before you. And we went low-tech for, for this presentation. I know normally you're used to seeing tons of PowerPoints, slideshows, so for this, I wanted to go old school. And I did, because I will talk about some numbers, I did want to make sure you had something to reference. But thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide you on an update of the, the beautiful work that your libraries are doing. Now, you've heard me say this before, that libraries are more than just books. We are a place to borrow books, but we are such more than that. We are vibrant community hubs that foster learning, engagement, and opportunity. Today, I just want to briefly talk to you about a few of those things that we do. I want to draw your attention to the stats that you have in front of you. Over the past year, from the stats that we're going to go over, it shows us that library usage has remained strong and it shows you that Beaufort County residents do value their libraries. Our cardholders borrowed 880,000 items. Seventy-two percent of those were physical items that you can hold in your hand and 28% of those were digital items you can download and access either on a computer or a mobile device. That shows you that in Beaufort County, we still value the traditional hold a book in your hand, but we also are embracing the digital trend as well. Our locations welcomed 373,000 visitors, showing that people still visit the library. I get that question a lot. But people still go to the library. Our trained staff answered 51,500 reference questions. Everything ranging from help with research to general inquiries, as well as how to use technology. We provided 1,199 meeting room reservations for community groups. They host their public meetings in our spaces. Some of you have been there using for your meetings and we appreciate being able to provide that service to the community. What I'm really proud about is that we grew our cardholder number to 105,000, just, just north of 105,000 people in Beaufort County who have library cards. When you think about population at the time being about 185,000 to 200,000, that shows me that at least 50% of people who call Beaufort County home also find home in their libraries. We also hosted 2,400 public programs. And that sounds like a lot when you start to think about how many days the libraries open Monday through Saturday. Also, when you think about holidays, 52 weeks out of the year. That's a lot of programs and for those 2,000 programs, we had about 38,000 people show up. Now, I have given you those statistics and my, one of my board chair members always says, Amanda, what do those numbers mean? So let me share with you how that compares to other libraries in the state. Beaufort County is number 11 in terms of population served. And the, and the libraries in front of us are Berkeley, ABBE Regional, which is Aiken, Barnwell, Edgefield, in Bamberg, as well as also Anderson County in the upstate. By their numbers and our numbers, I did a comparison this morning. Beaufort County reports more annual visitors. We have more programs and more attendees. We also had more items borrowed. And we are the only library in the state that has two bookmobiles. I thought you would like that. So I want to talk a little bit about those programs. I know you know that we do book clubs, lectures, presentations, that sort of thing, but you might not know about a few special things, so I want to call your attention to those. We have teen advisory boards that meet at the St. Helena Library and one that meets at the Bluffton Library. These are groups that are led by teens. We have a staff member who leads them, but the teens get together and they invest in their libraries through different things, through advising on what programs other teens might like. The St. Helena teens, I got to brag on them, Mr. Glover. The St. Helena teens decorated stepping stones that are in the butterfly garden out the back, out the back window. And then in Bluffton for Tab and folks, the Bluffton teens recently hosted their own murder mystery party. No one died, obviously, but it, they had their own whodunit. They put it together themselves, they acted in it themselves, and they figured it out themselves. We also offer read to a dog programs. It doesn't mean you can bring your canine friend. It means that a qualified certified therapy dog is onsite at our library locations and children can come and read to that dog. That's a great way for, for kids in a, in a non-stressful way to increase their literacy and their comfort with reading because we all know puppies love attention. But we don't leave, the canines aren't the only ones that get to participate in that. We also do read to a cat events in the summer as well. So we cover all the bases. Also want to call your attention to a game board that I provided to you. As of Saturday, the libraries are hosted, hosting our annual summer reading program. Last year, just over 2,000 individuals participated. I'm going to say this once and maybe repeat myself again. This is not just for kids. Yes, we want kids to read, but it's also for adults. And we incentivize that, meaning you can win prizes. If you participate, you can enter into win reader rewards, but also we have some grand prizes at the end that I know adults all throughout Beaufort County, as well as kids, would be interested in throwing their name in the hat. To participate, all you have to do is read 20 minutes a day. I've seen your backup presentations, so I know y'all are reading 20 minutes a day. This is a no-brainer for you. I hope to see all of your game boards completed in 30 days. But I hope that you'll also encourage everyone you know to participate as, as well. My personal goal is that we hit over 3,000 participants this year, but if we go higher than that, I certainly will be happy. Finally, I want to pivot to a little bit about infrastructure and innovation. So public libraries do reflect the changes in their community and we remain committed to keeping our spaces modern, welcoming, and accessible. Recently, our facilities and capital improvement team have been blessing our libraries. You will probably notice some carpet changing in certain areas. You're going to see some sprucing up of the exterior and we hope that that starts a momentum of refreshing our libraries to keep them warm, welcoming, and inviting spaces. You also see innovations like the lockers at Burton Wells. Have anybody seen those, had a chance to seen those? I give, I've given you a bookmark that says unlock your next read. On the back, it gives you the three easy steps on how to have your requested items sent to that locker for pickup. So we'd really love people to embrace this new technology. It's a, another way, a convenient way for people to pick up and return their items. And then also, and lastly, we are expanding our collections. I brought with you, with me, a, a wonder book. So on the front, it looks like a regular picture book. This is mixed by Ari Shong, but in the inside, it has a player. So it's, it's a merger of, it's still on, it's a merger of an audiobook and a book. So the book will actually read, read to you, so a child can sit and have the book being read to them as they follow along. It's a great kind of, I grew up with record players and the record would, would go bling, right, turn the page. This is this for a new generation. And each one of our libraries have a collection of wonder books, so do go check those out. Literally, go check those out. Again, unless there's any questions for you, I just wanted to end my presentation by saying thank you. Thank you for investing in our libraries. I hope you're impressed with what we do and I hope you stay tuned because we're not done yet. So I firmly believe that investing in your libraries is an investment in the, in the lives of the people who live and work in Beaufort County.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely, I was going to open it up to the committee.
Okay, so Amanda, what, you were talking about refreshing our facilities and Bluffton's great. We were at Hilton Head the other day, the carpet in the conference room is very sad. Is that on the list?
We would love to do a full renovation of Hilton Head and that is on our longer range plan, so when that comes before you, think about that carpet.
Yeah, it was awful. And are there plans to put lockers at any other facility?
We're still monitoring and learning on the ones that we have at Burton Wells, but I certainly could see potential uses across, across the library system because it just expands the opportunity for people to pick up items.
And didn't you get a grant for that if you were in my neighborhood?
We did, we, we received a grant through the Institute of Museum and Library Services for that locker system.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just wanted to tell you how many, how much people are appreciating the new library in Port Royal, which you probably already are aware of that. It's a great location for me personally to meet constituents because you have those private rooms and I see a lot of children there after school and during, on the weekends. I'm assuming they're coming from all over, but it's very children-oriented too.
Thank you for that, we do, we do love our Port Royal library.
Hey Amanda, listen, thank you. You talked about St. Helena, you talked about Bluffton, you didn't mention Hilton Head with, what's going on, but to what Tab has to say, we do an awful lot of meetings there as council members. And June 4th, Wednesday of this week, we have our next one. It's based on stormwater, but we want to thank you. It, it's, I think anywhere from 80 to 100 and some odd people fit in there easily. It, the technology's great and we appreciate your efforts.
Well, we love our Hilton Head library as well. I was just there last week, I did a presentation there myself. So I'll have to come back and do it again.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from the committee?
No, 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 no question. I appreciate the use of the library on St. Helena. I am actually going to try to, to, to complete this. I am reading one of my favorite authors that I actually got introduced at the Beaufort Library maybe 40, 50 years ago. So I'm reading that author right now, so it's keeping me up at night. Three o'clock in the morning, I'm reading, so I'm, I'm going to complete this here.
That's the best kind. All reading counts though, we always say, reading text messages, the back of the cereal box. What you read is, is your business.
So I'm looking forward to two, three awards, or three prizes or whatever.
We, we need to get a picture. Hannah, we'll need to get a picture of that.
All right, with, there's no further questions or comments. Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it, and please keep us posted. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I do want to open back up the citizens' comment, but I believe there's another presentation.
Well, that concludes my report, but I do think that...
Was EMS going to present?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon.
I'll let EMS go.
I'm going to introduce our Director of Beaufort County EMS, Donna Owenby. She's going to talk for a few moments about EMS operations. As well, we have a story to share with you today of a paramedic and one of our patients that really sends home the message of the value of operations of Beaufort County EMS.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to give you a few boring stats, but then I have the good people coming up and giving their story that I think you'll find very interesting.
And before you, can you do me one favor and bring that mic down to make sure everything's captured on the audio?
Nobody's ever said I was quiet. I'm impressed. So we have 11 frontline units and of that, two are vans that are in Da Fuski. We have five quick response vehicles and all of those are manned by paramedics only because it's only one person on the truck. And just to give you a little history, in 1974, it cost just under $11,000 to buy an ambulance. Today, it's almost $400,000 when we put everything in it. So it's, it's quite a change. Calls for service, we did so far, and this goes up just to May 16th. 18,579, billable calls is 12,346. And that, those are calls that we can actually charge for, okay? And advanced life support calls, we have 7,993. And BLS calls, 3,876. This just gives you a rundown, we have ALS, BLS, and deceased patients are 127. And this is just a little graph and it just kind of tells you what we have. The first one about the gross charges, that's what we can bill for. And then we have forced write-offs and those are Medicare, Medicaid, VA, anything TRICARE or anything to do with the military, anything that their insurance doesn't cover, we have to write it off. There's no way you can go after that. The amount of revenue recovery for forced right after that is eight thou, $8 million. And then the net revenue so far that we've collected this year is $5,214,000 in '86. We have a, and sometimes that $5 million is a little confusing, but you got to remember that that's what we've collected so far, but we also, because of the economy, allow people to make payments, a payment plan because we don't want to make anybody really stressed out by having to pay a large bill. So we make up a payment plan that they can pay anywhere from $5 a month to whatever they can afford, okay? And now, while my stats are done, I want to introduce, I know it's difficult for some people to understand what we do at EMS and it's more than just what some people think. And I love this job and I hate to say, but I've been doing it for 40, almost 44 years. I've been doing nursing for 35. And when I had to choose between, I took EMS because it's my first love. This is the only job I know that you can go to work in the morning and have no idea what you're going to do. You, you may save the life of somebody, you're going to change the life of people, families, and people that you come in contact with and you have no idea. And a lot of people say it's a kind of a junkie, they like to have all that excitement, but it kind of takes that kind of person, but you also, when you get on that scene, you have to control that scene and you have to be, you know, in control of everything and around awareness. It's a hard job that not everybody can do, but I'm, I'm proud to tell you that Beaufort County EMS has some of the best medics there is in the state. We've often won many, many awards for this. In fact, the year before, we actually won the Paramedic of the Year, the Advanced EMT Year, and the Basic. That's never been done in the state, all three categories. That's never been done in the state, all three categories that we got. So, I'm very proud of my group, and I'd like to introduce Jennifer Calcorzy, who is the paramedic, and Evan, you can come up with her, too. Jennifer's one of my medics, and she actually is now a teacher at ACE, but she still works for us. And then I'll let you go ahead with your story.
So, good afternoon, Beaufort County Council members, county administrators, and members of the public. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today about the critical role emergency medical services plays in our community, and how the professionals in this field can change and even save lives. EMS isn't just about responding to emergencies, it's a lifeline. It's a critical thread in the fabric of public safety that ensures, when the unimaginable happens, trained professionals are there, fast, prepared, and unwavering. Every second counts. Every decision matters. Every trained hand can be the difference between life and death. I've proudly served with Beaufort County EMS since January of 2008, and over the years, I've responded to thousands of calls, motor vehicle crashes, suicides, homicides, cardiac arrests, even witnessed the miracle of life, five of which I have delivered, and everything in between. Some of those calls fade with time. Others stay with you, sometimes for beautiful reasons, and sometimes because they haunt you. There is one call in particular that has stayed with me every day for nearly 10 years. On September 19th of 2015, I was the paramedic dispatch for what was reported as a crushing involving a 12-year-old child who had been run over by the blade deck of a small bush hog. As we pulled out of the station, we immediately launched a helicopter. My partner and I knew, based on his age and the severity of the information that was being received while en route, that his only real chance of survival was getting him to a pediatric trauma center as quickly as possible. When we arrived on scene, the first thing I saw was a mother, sitting in the distance, on the ground, rocking back and forth, completely overcome with grief and shock. In that moment, I saw myself. At the time, my own son was the same age. It cut me straight to my core. Before our arrival, the fire department had already lifted the blade deck up and off of the child. He was unconscious, unresponsive, laying on his stomach with his head turned towards us as we approached. With one eye already swollen shut, severely bruised, I knew that he had suffered significant head trauma. In that instant, I thought to myself, is he even alive? And I dreaded the approach to find out. On initial assessment, he had the largest open skull fracture I've ever seen in my career, even to this day. Yet, he was breathing and he had a pulse, so it was time to move. We quickly jumped into action. What unfolded next was a coordinated effort involving EMS, fire, law enforcement, dispatch, and air medical transport, each link in the chain performing with urgency and skill to give this young man a fighting chance. It was truly like a well-oiled machine. Today, that child, who's now a young man, is here with us in this room. You'll hear directly from him in just a moment, but before he speaks, I want to leave you with this. Our job in EMS is not always easy to explain. Work is never-ending. The hours are long. The calls are unpredictable, and the emotional toll can be heavy. We are needed 24/7, 365, so we miss time with our families, our loved ones, our friends, birthdays, holidays, celebration. It also takes a toll on our families just the same. But it's also one of the most meaningful careers a person can undertake. That young man's life wasn't saved by luck. It was saved by preparation, by training, by teamwork, and the simple fact that help was available and ready when he needed it most. A lot of times, we in EMS do not get to know the outcomes of patients we provide care to, and that can be hard to not get a sense of closure. I've been privileged to have the opportunity to recently meet this young man again, in much better circumstances. I've been able to hear his story, what he remembers from that day, his path to recovery, and the challenges he now faces. But even more so, I've had the honor to get to know him as the wonderful young man he has become since that day. I truly do not think he realizes what that has done for me, in my heart and my soul, as an EMS professional. I was able to get what others would call closure from that day, while also opening the door to a new chapter, getting to know him as the person. As a community, we must invest in emergency medical services, not just as a service, but as a vital and truly lifesaving system. Because when health emergencies or tragedies strike, EMS is the answer. I want to thank you for your time, and I now invite this young man to share his story, Mr. Evan Hefty.
You couldn't bend that up a little bit? My name is Evan Hefty. I was the one who got ran over. I was 12-years-old. This was, as she said, almost 10-years ago, and one of the most difficult things that I've ever had to go through in life. If EMS didn't make the choices that they made, lifelighting me, helping me, stabilizing me, and assisting me, I would either be dead right now or in a wheelchair in a vegetable state. So, I really do want to give a round of applause to EMS and a very, very grateful thank you for what they did to help me. It has been the longest 10-years of my life, learning how to walk again, talk again, having to wait, you know, and learn how to see again with my eyes being swollen shut, just anything you could think of. And I would say, it's still very hard to this day, and the hardest part is doing the best that I can, but still being judged or shamed and punished for being different, per se. Just because I walk different, I can, doesn't mean I am different, you know? I can still do the same thing. At this moment, I am going to school at TCL. I have one more class to take, and I'll have my associates in general technology and HVAC. I did, from April or March till the beginning of May, I did an internship with Public Works for the city. I've also applied for the county to do an internship or possibly get a job. Most jobs that I have applied for, though, I have been given the runaround, the whole "It's not you, it's us," or "You're a liability" speech, and I have never been given the chance. So, I did really want to thank Public Works, the City of Beaufort, for taking me in and teaching me everything that they did, and allowing me to grow stronger, learn more, and be a better person. Every day is a new day, new story. I'm not exactly sure what to say now, I'm very nervous.
Here, hang on one second. Is there anybody that'll make a comment at this point?
Please, just a real quick one. First of all, Jennifer and Evan, thanks for being here, and it's, I'll say this humbly, I think you just had a tremendous interview. So, I, you know, I hope people are heeding this, and, you know, I think back to 12-years-old, and I don't know what, do you remember going through what you did?
Yeah, I remember that day, all up until it happened. I remember, I was at my mom's house, doing yard work in the yard. My stepdad got the truck and the trailer, put the tractor on and everything, said he was going to go out behind the old Publix, and we were going to do some, or he was going to do some lawn work and lawn care, asked if I wanted to come, and I agreed. And when I went there, tragedy struck. My mom and sister, one of my younger sisters and my mom came to visit, and I got off the tractor, I turned the bush hog off. I put the tractor in park, but did not turn the tractor off. So, as I got off and was standing next to it, waving to my mom and sister, the tractor jumped gears, crept forward, grabbed me by the back of my ankle, and the blades were still winding down. I don't remember that much, but I remember everything else.
Well, God bless you. Listen, going forward, no matter what happens, you have a council and a staff that cares, and don't ever forget that.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
I just, I want to thank you sincerely for stepping forward and sharing that story. It takes a lot to share it, and thank y'all for being there.
Thank you. I wanted to thank y'all for actually letting me come here to tell my story. This is probably the first time I've ever had to actually tell my story to some people who actually hear me out and actually voice a reason, and not just judge me and say, or make up their own story of what happened to me, you know? So, thank you all.
Absolutely. No judgment over here. Appreciate you coming forward. All right. Is anything further from EMS? Thank you all again for everything that you do and the presentation as well. Any questions from the committee for EMS specifically? All right. I do, I noticed there was a number of people that came in after we closed Citizens' Comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to say a few words for Citizens' Comment? All right, that's not on the agenda. Okay. All right, so we will not be reopening Citizens' Comment, and if that closes the Assistant County Administrator Report, we'll jump into number eight, which is an update from the Galaguchi Chamber of Commerce on Economic Development Programs. The presenter is going to be Marilyn Hemingway. If she could come forward. Ma'am, I know we spoke earlier last week about the time that you requested. If we can actually limit that a little bit, so we can stay on schedule, we're at 2:30 now, and the next meeting starts at 3 o'clock.
We can do that, no problem. Thank you. I do have some folks with us, but we can keep it as tight as we need it to be.
Sounds good. I want you to have sufficient time, but I also want to make sure we stay on track for the schedule.
And I appreciate that. If we could pass those out to the committee members, and we'll just get rolling, if you don't mind.
Sounds good. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Lynn, thank you. First, I want to say, "Tinky, tanky, thank you, gracias," for allowing the Galaguchi Chamber of Commerce to come before you today and share with you the work that is being done in collaboration with community members, community organizations, and also with someone who is heavily invested in the community in many ways. Thank you, because I want to be frank with my involvement with Beaufort County and the things that I'm doing in St. Helena Island. So, I want to start with this quote. "We must understand the politics of our community, and we must know what politics is supposed to produce. We must know what part politics play in our lives, and until we become politically mature, we will always be misled, led astray, or deceived or maneuvered into supporting someone politically who doesn't have the good of our community at heart." That's a quote by Malcolm X, and I wanted to open with that, but I also have another quote that I'm going to get to, but I first want to talk about grief, very briefly. Grief can be on an individual basis and on a community basis. Grief has five stages: denial, anger, bargaining, depression, and acceptance. As an individual, I'm sure we have all experienced grief, especially if you lived long enough. But we also experience grief as a community, and that grief comes from loss. It could be loss of ideals, it could be loss from learning new information and accepting information you may not have had before. And we go through these steps. And I dare say, and it may be a bit arrogant of me, and I hope you don't take it that way, that St. Helena Island community, Beaufort, has been experiencing grief. I certainly know, being Galaguchi, and because of the formation of our community, our ancestors being enslaved and brought here, we have always had a form of grief, trauma, if you will. And if you don't work through these five steps, you tend to get stuck. I found it ironic today, as I was driving in and driving to St. Helena Island, that on the sign, it said "Galaguchi Seat of the Galaguchi." If you're not careful when you take a seat, you can get embedded in something and not move. But as you go through the steps of grief, and you grow, hopefully, and you move through those steps, you unseat yourself to bigger and better things. And that is the legacy that our ancestors left us. They evolved into a new language that they created, because they had the intellect to do that. They were the engineers and technicians who knew how to manage water and man, to control the water, excuse me, and manage the land to create a whole new culture, to grow the indigo and rice. That is the gift that was left us. That is the movement and the motion and the dance and the song and the language that was left us. So, as humans in 2025, what does that really mean? It means that if we view the world the same at 50, the same as we did at 20, we didn't learn a thing. But we are a community of evolution, we're a community that learned, we are a community that still learns. And I grieve. Me getting involved has been quite a while, but in this particular situation, why we're doing the work, has collaboration on St. Helena Island, in Beaufort County, in Sheldon, Bluffton, and beyond, it's because we worked through our grief. Every single one of these individuals who are with me today have worked through their grief, and they've accepted it. And in their acceptance, they said, "I see challenges, and I want to address those challenges." My grief on a personal level is knowing that when I became involved in this particular situation in St. Helena Island, let's call it for what it is, Pine Island Development, is knowing that when I first received information, knowing later that it was incorrect information. I was misinformed, and I took responsibility for that and learned more information, and came back and said I had changed my mind. That's acceptance. I had to deal with grief when being on the board of SCALP Coastal Conservation League, knowing that I changed my mind after doing my research, asked for me not to run for a second term. I choose not to, because I accepted my place in the bigger picture of this, that I was willing to sacrifice something that, quite frankly, wasn't that important when it came to the community, and I let it go. But I want you to know that, because it's an example of the misinformation that's been out there.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
We've been...
What's the...
Point of order. I'm looking at the title here, "Update from the Galaguchi Chamber of Commerce on Economic Development Program."
Yes, sir, and I believe she's getting to the program itself.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do have that time back, I hope. Thank you. So, we're here now, and the work that is being done through the chamber in economic development is not done just as an individual, it's done as a community. Those who have gone through the five steps of grief, accepted that, and said, "Let's do something about it," and that's showing up in economic development. And here on page three, you see things that I've done. Our mission for the chamber is to create global awareness, sustainable economic opportunity for businesses and communities along the Galaguchi Corridor. There's been pushback on that, but we continue the work. For over two years, organizations and collaboration have been deeply invested and engaged in advancing community and economic development. Today, we provide an update on that work. Extensive work, including individuals, local stakeholders, community members, businesses, and businesses, work that aligns with the Beaufort County strategic goals of economic development. As I traveled throughout the Galaguchi Corridor in my work, meeting everyone in these different communities, meeting the residents and the stakeholders, we all have these challenges that we face, but I also have found those who are addressing the challenges, and these are the folks who are with me today. We find these challenges being addressed on St. Helena through recognizing that there's a need for a centralized, adequate, community-oriented facility, and that is happening through the community at 808 Sea Island Parkway on St. Helena Island. It is serving... It is serving as a starter community and recreation center. The results are more community involvement, more small businesses receiving investment, nonprofits having a space to do the work. And it's uplifting the community and others are recognizing the work that needs to be done. But let's talk about those and let's recognize those who are doing the work now. But let's also recognize that we need investment in this community. We need investment in all these communities and we're going to talk today about that investment and meet someone, Mr. Elvio Troppiano, who has made that investment of his time, listening skills, and also working to make Pine Island Development, excuse me, to happen. First, I want to introduce Ms. Jendia Blunt, who is doing the work with veterans. Ms. Blunt, if you could please come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Marilyn. Greetings. Good afternoon. My name is Jendia Blunt and today I want to share with you the incredible work being done through the Veterans Helping Veterans Claims Assistance Program, led by myself with the steadfast support of Mr. Roy Brown. This free service is specifically designed to assist our veterans, particularly those in rural areas like St. Helena, who often face barriers such as distance, education, and communication gaps when accessing their VA benefits. Many of our veterans have selflessly served our country but have never been rated for their service-connected disabilities. This is where my initiative steps in. Located at 808 Sea Island Parkway on St. Helena Island, our team has been committed to processing several types of claims and applications for our local heroes. We've seen a remarkable increase in the number of claims processed despite where these veterans may stand on various issues within the community, which has made a significant difference in the lives of many families. I am truly honored to have the resources to serve our veterans and I strongly believe that our model is scalable, allowing us to reach even more veterans in such areas like Hampton County, which is another example of where we have underserved veterans. Our mission is rooted in honor, service, and impact. As a Navy veteran with a background in IT, along with my husband, we leverage our military experience and passion for helping others to uplift our community. Whether through coaching with Smoke Athletic League, advocating for the betterment of our youth with Henry Clay Foundation, or assisting with VA claims, our work is driven by a commitment to service and justice. One of our proudest moments was helping a veteran go from a 0% rating to a 60% disability rating, resulting in a $27,000 back pay deposit and over $3,000 per month for the rest of his life. This is just one of the many success stories we've had. In fact, we've assisted over 70 veterans, with more than one-third of them achieving total and permanent disability ratings of 100%. This program has thrived due to the selfless vision of Elvio Troppiano, who has worked tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure that our team, our community, our youth, and our veterans receive the help they deserve. He has done so without seeking recognition and has intentionally remained anonymous out of fear that people who will make the association and would discourage them from accessing these valuable resources that we offer. However...
.............................................